City County Planning Commission, please come to order. Ms. Martin, the row, please.
Yes ma'am, Commissioner Rich, Commissioner Vitale, Commissioner Balance, Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Unseld.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert, Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes ma'am. Have the February 20 summary minutes in your pocket, are there any corrections on those minutes? No corrections, I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second, please.
Second.
Thank you ma'am.
Commissioner Balance, Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Unseld.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Upstain.
Commissioner Gay.
Stain.
Commissioner Madison.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner, I request that you order that the record include all statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application, and the qualifications for staff witnesses. Finally, I'd request that you administer the oath to those witnesses.
So ordered. Do you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
I do.
Thank you both. The subdivision approvals and the site development plans in the packet, any questions on those? Letters of credit and performance bond, we have another agenda on your desk with the five items now, any questions on those five items? No questions, and I'd ask for a motion.
We'll move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Balance, Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes ma'am. We do not have any unfinished business, so the first item tonight for public hearing, docket number 202004 Flume, Hillview Place LLC, Baker &amp; Hillard Incorporated, and Russell and Frances Heard have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on tracts of land containing approximately 1.9174 acres located on Worthway, located on the north corner of Worthway and Blue Level Road from mixed-use residential to high-density residential. And also on docket number 202008 ZBG, those same applicants have filed to rezone that same land from general business with the general development plan to RM4, which is multifamily residential with the general development plan. And we'll have the staff report from Ms. Ramsey.
Thank you Chair Runner, and just kind of bear with me, this is not an ag to RE zone change, so I've got a little bit more to cover, but we had a pre-application conference on January 28th for the properties you see outlined in yellow there. As Chair Runner's already said, they are currently zoned general business, they are vacant at the moment in the area, you've got some agricultural tracts, single-family, multifamily, public-institutional, and vacant as well with an industrial use over there also and commercial. And the future land use map is mixed-use residential, which the applicants would like to change, and I'll go to this that we can reference as we go along here. If that future land use map amendment is successful from mixed-use residential to high-density residential, the applicants would like to rezone from general business to RM4 multifamily residential in order to develop the properties with a maximum of 48 multifamily residential units. I will note that currently under general business, we go by the RM3 standards for residential uses in that zone, and that would currently allow them 38 units, and so they're requesting to go to RM4 for 48 units. This property was originally zoned, or properties were originally zoned agriculture, and they were rezoned to general business in 1999. The properties, if they are, the Flume is amended, then the RM4 zoning district is a potentially compatible zone in the high-density residential Flume designation, but you all should determine if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. I will note below that, in the compatibility with surrounding development, there is a clump of mature trees on the east side of the proposed development. We'll come back to the points to consider in a minute, and I'll move on to the second page of your staff report. And I'm going to read through the future land use map designations for mixed-use residential. That applies to areas where taken as a whole, the primary land use is residential in a variety of housing types and densities balanced by complementary retail, office, institutional, and civic uses. The distribution of land among these various activities shall be implemented through specific zoning with standards addressing the form and character of development to ensure compatibility. Designation applies to the historic core of downtown Bowling Green or urbanized areas being redeveloped with the primary use as residential where complementary commercial and services are provided in a contiguous area. Here, development standards should be tailored to emphasize an urban character and a mix and intensity of development appropriate to this unique center of activity. When proposed as part of a mixed-use development, commercial uses should comprise of only 25% of such development. Standalone commercial development should not exceed 10% of any contiguous area designated mixed-use residential. No commercial footprint should exceed 10,000 square feet, and compatibility will be assessed by applying the policies in LU113 in conjunction with the general development plan. The applicants would like to change that designation to high-density residential, which consists of areas occupied by multifamily housing including higher-density duplexes, townhomes, apartments, buildings, and condominiums. Density exceeding eight dwelling units per acre are encouraged in this category. High-density single-family may also be acceptable at five and a half dwelling units per acre. Below that, you see LU114 of the comprehensive plan that outlines how to amend the future land use map. One of those criteria is to, is that the proposed use is clearly compatible with the existing surrounding development, so the applicants have chosen to address that criteria with the following narrative. The bulk height and materials of planned structures are consistent with existing development, as is the intended use. Finally, the existing infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, and stormwater are believed to be sufficient to meet the needs of the planned development. Moving on to the site characteristics review, the proposed site layout is shown here. That layout includes a 30-foot setback along Worthway and Blue Level Road and a 20-foot rear yard setback due to an existing utility easement. Side yard setbacks will adhere to the minimum five-foot setback required in the RM4 zone as outlined in the zoning ordinance. I'm going to go on to page three with the site design and compatibility review. First, looking at surrounding density, existing and permitted densities, in fact, I will go to our density map here. And the surrounding subdivisions range from .13 dwelling units per acre to 16.76 dwelling units per acre. The properties along Blue Level Road are mainly agricultural with some rural-density residential uses also mixed in. Hillview Mills is located in the vicinity and contains a mixture of moderate-density single-family and higher-density multifamily uses. The current zoning of the properties we're looking at tonight would allow a maximum density of 19.82 dwelling units per acre, which is higher in density than any other residential development shown on the density map. The 48 units the applicants are proposing would result in a density of 25.03 dwelling units per acre. Going down to surrounding architectural features, there's a mixture of one- and two-story buildings located in the area. The existing multifamily structures in Hillview Mills are a mixture of one and two stories and contain a maximum of eight dwelling units per, I'm sorry, eight units per building. This application proposes 16 units per building. Building materials review, the majority of the buildings in the vicinity are comprised of brick and cement board siding. Some structures incorporate vinyl as an accent material and soffits and trim, and there's also a building in the vicinity that is constructed of metal materials. I'll also note proposed open space, the applicants have agreed in the development plan conditions to a minimum of 20% open space, the proposed RM4 zone requires at least So going on to page four, you all have been seeing the Walnut Valley focal point plan here a little bit recently, and so this one falls into that as well. There were seven items that were evaluated, the proposal complies with two of the policies, does not comply with two, and then compliance of three should be determined by you all. I'll go through those real quickly, quickly what those are. Well, WV1B, which states that a minimum of 50% of all parking required should be to the rear of the front building line, and parking should not be located within any required building setback line. The applicant's concept plan does not provide for internal circulation and proposes two access points to Worthway. Parking is proposed to be located in front of some of the proposed buildings, I'll go back to the concept, as well as within the front building setback line. This application does not comply with this policy. WV1C, any project should be designed, developed in a manner that will not impair the reasonable long-term use of nearby properties in fulfillment of the land use policies of this focal point plan and the comprehensive plan. That should be determined by you all. WV2A, residential development should be compatible with adjacent land uses. New development should not exceed the overall density of adjacent development by more than 50%. We've kind of already determined that this one does, so it does, the proposal does not comply with this policy. WV2E, a minimum of 20% of the tract to be developed should be set aside and maintained as open space. All open spaces should interconnect by a minimum of a three-foot wide walking trail. Actual construction of paved walking trails dedicated to a public use may substitute for some portion of the minimum open space requirement. Likewise, dedication and acceptance by a public entity of a portion of land for a public purpose may substitute acre for acre for the minimum open space requirement. The development plan conditions require that a minimum of 20% open space be provided, so that complies with that portion of the policy. There is no commitment, however, that the open space or spaces will interconnect as outlined above, so the proposal does not comply with that portion. WV2G, this one states that in order to provide for the development of housing that is affordable to residents throughout the community, incentives should be considered for construction of such within the focal point area, focal plan area. These incentives may include some density or other bonus for a commitment to provide an affordable housing. And as stated previously, the proposed density exceeds the overall density of adjacent development by more than 50%, but the applicants have not provided information as to whether or not the housing provided will be affordable, which may justify the excess density that does not comply with the recommendations outlined previously in WV2A. So, that's the focal point plan, and we will move on to development plan conditions. I'll read through the eight of those that have been supplied. Number one, all new utility lines will be located underground. Number two, no building shall exceed two stories in height. Number three, the exteriors of all structures will be comprised of brick, stone, cement board, or other modern masonry material. No plain or split-faced block shall be utilized. Number four, the development shall not exceed 48 residential units. Number five, the property shall be developed with uniform parking lot lighting. Number six, developer will properly address any sinkholes on the property either utilized same or engineering the mitigation of same consistent with applicable groundwater regulations. Number seven, the property shall have no more than one managing entity for the development. And number eight, the development shall have a minimum of 20% open space. Going on to our focus 2030 category review, there are 22 items that apply to this application. The application does not comply with five of those, complies with three of them, and the rest are left up to your determination. Proposal may comply with LU111 and 112, if deemed compatible with the surrounding area, the Flume amendment is approved, and the planning commission determines that the proposal is compatible with the area and complies with LU113. Proposal may comply with LU2 and LU21, if you all deem this to be a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. LU211 is left up to your all determination, which encourages increased open space to ensure that an adequate amount of such space is usable. We've already talked about how they commit to provide 20% open space, but did not specify the type of open space to be provided and whether or not such open space would be usable. The proposal does not comply with LU214, PR17, or NCR116, as the applicants did not address the existing trees located within the development. Does not comply with LU231 and TR21, the applicants did not address access to the property. LU252, this body should determine if the proposed infill development is compatible with the surrounding area and if it complies with that policy. Complies with some, but not all of LU28 and LU281, which deals with those focal point plan policies. HN1, HN12, and HN13 is left to your all's determination if this is a compatible infill development that will maintain or improve the existing character and pattern of development within the area, and if it will strengthen the existing area. HN21, HN4, you all should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed development is believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. So I will go back to the first page and we'll go over the points to consider to kind of wrap all this up. This body should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the Flume meets the criteria outlined in LU114. This body should determine if the increased density and number of units allowed by the high-density residential Flume category coupled with 16 plexes instead of eight plexes are appropriate in this location. If the Flume amendment is approved, the proposal would be consistent with the Flume and high-density residential category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, some of the review criteria for site design, and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And of course, you all should determine the compatibility of the proposed development. So, that is all I have, I'm happy to answer any questions, the applicants are also here.
Thank you ma'am. Any questions?
So, help me understand, if I read your staff report correct, they could already develop this property?
Yes, they could develop it, under the current general business zoning, for residential uses, we would revert to the RM3 standards, which would allow them a maximum of 38 residential units.
So the reason for going to RM4 is to get an extra 10 units?
The applicants may be able to confirm that, but that is the result of the request, that it would be 10 additional units.
And...
Parking.
Say that again, please.
Parking.
Yeah, that's where I was going to go with this. So is RM, refresh my memory, RM4, the density is determined by parking and etc., am I correct about that?
Basically, you would work backwards, put in your landscape buffers, see how much parking you could accommodate on the property, and then that would dictate your building footprints and basically the number of units and number of bedrooms per unit.
And so is that how we arrived at the density here?
That is just what they restricted it to in the development plan conditions, and then that is also, I believe, what matches what's shown on the preliminary development plan.
And lastly, you briefly touched on the density map, are there any other RM4s in the area?
There are properties zoned RM4, which you'll see just to the rear, however, if you look at the land use map, part of that is comprised of single-family lots, and then the density and characteristics of the RM4 piece to the rear of this property, Monica touched on some of those, and it would lend itself more to an RM3 style of development with the number of units per building and the building heights and the density.
And the Flume is RM3, is set for RM3, correct?
It's mixed-use residential, which says that RM3 is a potentially compatible zone in that designation.
Is the parking established here, is it two per bedroom or one per bedroom?
So it's actually, it would be one space per one-bedroom unit, two spaces per two-bedroom unit, and then, once you add that together, then you add a 10% guest parking requirement on top of that base number.
One last question, do we have information on, you alluded to a number of other eight plexes in the area. Building, so are those primarily masonry units exterior? So what are the building materials in the area for the eight plexes that are there?
Yeah, those I think should be age three. The majority are comprised of brick and cement board siding, and there are some structures that incorporate vinyl as an accent material and soffits and trim.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Are they going to have any kind of community area for this? Do you know?
20%, right?
They have designated 20% open space, but they didn't specify what that...
They didn't specify where it's at.
Right. Or what it's going to be used for.
Community center, any kind of office, anything like that? I don't see anything like that on here.
Yeah, what they've shown on here is what we have, they may be able to speak more to what they may intend open space to be used for, but that has not been specified in the application.
Other questions commissioners, will we hear from the applicant? Thank you ma'am, thank you, and we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you Chair Runner. Good evening Commissioners, Chris Davenport, here tonight on behalf of Hillview Place LLC, the applicant on this application. Monica, thank you, you did a good job. A few points I want to add, and Commissioner Graham, I'd like to get back to that question about how density is calculated, how parking is calculated, something I always have to remind myself when I have these applications. But the first thing I want to make sure that the commission is aware of... Is the pointer up here? Is this is really an extension of another development this client has done in this same area? It's going to be kind of hard, it's going to be kind of hard to see this, but the subject parcel we're talking about tonight is actually, is these three lots right here, outlined in red. Immediately adjacent to these, to the left, as you're looking at them from the front, is the ingress and egress to the development, the RM4 development that sits immediately behind this property. Are you going to help me? Yeah, that's better, thank you. So this property that's immediately adjacent is actually part of this development. But my clients also own and developed this development. They did that a number of years ago, they've had good success with that, and so I just want to point that out. They now have an option on these properties, on these parcels, and that's why they have filed this application.
You alluded to an RM4 development, can you point to that?
I believe this is zoned RM4.
So the property behind it is zoned RM4?
It's zoned RM4, but it was developed.
Ah, I got it.
It's more characteristic of an RM3 style development.
So zoned RM4, but it has binding elements that are consistent with RM3?
Well, I don't know that the binding elements restrict it to that, it's just...
It is.
As it was developed, there's no more than eight units per building, they're two stories.
Okay.
At least to date.
And the density that's currently existing on the property is, I think, that was in the staff report somewhere, I think...
Let me ask it a different way. On the property behind this property, if they chose to build a 16plex or whatever we're trying to do here, could they do it? Could they build one there?
They could, we would have to make sure that there's ample parking.
And we're going to go back to the RM4 parking issue, and that's going to dictate what the density could be, correct?
Right, and I'm not sure where their drainage is currently located, if there's, if it would even be feasible to do that.
That's a good segue, I think Commissioner Graham, is that the, an RM4 classification from this property does not do anything to alter the required parking for the property. So, and Rachel or Ben, if I misstate, you're going to chime up and correct me, okay? But my understanding has always been that the way parking is calculated is not dependent upon the zoning classification. It's calculated by the number of bedrooms. And so, now, density is a calculation, that's a function of dwelling units to acreage, and you can have a two-bedroom unit, a two-bedroom apartment, that's one dwelling unit. You could have two separate one-bedroom apartments, and those would be two dwelling units. So there is a distinction between how we calculate density in relation to bedrooms and how we calculate parking in relation to bedrooms. So put another way, I could be here tonight asking for 48 two-bedroom apartments, those would still be 48 dwelling units. The units per acreage would be the same that what you have here, but it would require more parking. Because this application has a large, a good number of one-bedroom units, to be more specific, of the 48 bedrooms we're asking, 30... To be more specific, of the forty-eight bedrooms, we're asking thirty-two are one-bedroom. And so, one point I would make to you guys, ladies and gentlemen, is that not all density is the same, because not all dwelling units are the same. If you have a two-bedroom unit or a three-bedroom unit, the parking will be more, you'll need more parking, it will be a more intense use on the same amount of acreage, even though the density number wouldn't be any different. Is that, am I making sense, or am I confounding the problem? Because I do that sometimes, you know?
Correct, and, but with one further clarification to add to that is, more parking requires more land.
Correct.
That is correct, and that is what you stated. But the reference in the staff report is to the adjustments we made roughly two years ago to remove any sort of cap on that RM4. And so that's why the statement was made that you back into that. So you find out how much parking you need, you see how much land is based on lot coverage, and then you back into it. So the difference between the RM3 zone and the RM4 zone does relate to density in that matter, because it, because there's no cap.
Correct, Ben, and that's not, that's not the point I'm trying to make. The point I'm trying to make is, I got the impression earlier that maybe there was the impression that by moving it to RM3 to RM4, somehow the parking ratio to bedroom would be different, and it is not.
And I, I think my question actually spoke more specifically, we just had a training on this, and clearly I wasn't asleep when that happened. But the parking actually is now the only determining factor for density in RM4, and so that's what I was asking.
Speaking of something I'm not aware of yet, Commissioner Graham, so I need to get some training.
Nor was I until the training recently. So, so I'm starting to understand, and there was a little bit of caution associated with that. So when we see these RM4s now, we have to look at those a little differently than we did in the past, because there's no cap there anymore. It's just, basically, calculate your parking, and that determines what your density can be.
Correct.
And so, that's why we're alluding to this parking question a bit more closely now.
But, but given, given the fact that we do have thirty-two one-bedrooms in the forty-eight mix, that allows, that, I mean, that alone allowed us to go to twenty percent open space, or that was a big component. If those had been two-bedroom units or a larger mix of two-bedroom units, our parking goes up, we, we can make less commitment when it comes to open space. Bless you.
May I ask this question?
Where is the open space?
Commissioner Warren, it will be the, the, basically the spaces that are not designated as parking, or the buildings.
Where is that?
It's, it's basically the areas that are white. And to commit, bless you, to Commissioner Clark's question, the, the development plan does not call for a pool or a community building or meeting room, like you've seen a lot of other multifamily developments, and it's for a couple reasons. One, this is a 1.9-acre tract that we're developing. This is not part of a, like the Drake or other developments you all have seen semi-recently. Number two, there is an intent here to keep the cost low, and, and my client's other development that's across the driveway there, they have, they're three miles from Western. So, you know, the, the idea is to keep the cost low, to keep it as affordable as possible. That's also why you see this one-bedroom mix. That, in that market, those are actually sought after. And so that's why, when I, even when I saw, when I see that many one-bedrooms, that's a question I had, because that's a little unusual. But that, the market they're going for, that is what's in demand. So, a couple of points there, there's really not room for, for those types of meeting rooms or pool, and number two, that gets it out of the market they're trying to be in, that becomes a horse of a different color.
Well, my, my thought on that was, you've got a lot of Western students there, is there gonna be anybody there to watch this? If there's not an office there, no community center, you've got parties that the fraternities and sororities can't have anymore, are they all gonna be out here at this site?
All I can say is, Ms. Clark, is that under, even one of the Walnut Valley focal points is, that they agreed to there be one management entity for this entity, for this development, just like next door. My clients, two of which are here today, of the three, Mr. Fuqua and Mr. Perry, they're local, they're in town, they manage these properties themselves, they haven't had those problems next door. So I guess if they do have those problems, either they'll be responding to it or they'll be calling me, I guess, but we don't foresee that being an issue. It hasn't been to date.
What area are these gonna be facing? What road? The buildings don't look like they're gonna be facing Worth or, I mean, we can't tell by this where they're facing. And in Walnut Valley, they're supposed to face a certain way.
I'm not sure, I don't, I'm not sure there is a Walnut Valley focal point for the orientation. I don't recall seeing that in the staff report. Could be wrong. We do see that, Commissioner Clark, out Scottsville Road. Y'all are probably more accustomed to out Scottsville Road, in between I-65 and Alvin, that is one of the policy points out there. I actually don't recall that being a policy point here, but I'll tell you that the eight plexes, you can, just from their orientation, they will face this way and this way, and the sixteen plexes face this way, basically horizontal, this way, the way they're depicted there.
Will be any access off of...
All access will be off Worth way. Yes, ma'am. Just, and again, Monica did a great job. I just wanted to make sure the commission was, that you all understood, this is basically an extension of what they've done across that driveway, which has been successful for them. These will be all brick, stone, or masonry products, be no vinyl involved in the exterior of the structures. They are capped at two stories. That, and some of the RM4 that I've done, that's one of the biggest issues, is wanting to go up, and, and needing RM4 to go up. So just like, the, the product to the back, may, as Rachel's caught it, it's RM4 with RM3 characteristics, I would point out that limiting the two structures or two stories would also be an RM3 characteristic for this development, that we're limiting to that.
Okay, so Chris, in, in the adjoining property, do they have any sixteen-plex units?
Those are eight plexes.
Eight plexes, okay. And in, so, make the argument for me, why you need sixteen plexes in this one? And if you don't, then why not just take the RM3 that you already have and develop the property?
Of course, that's, that's the operative question. First question I asked my client. They've got these properties under contract. The price of land out there, not what it was when they bought the other properties. And in fact, the other, and they're almost identical acreages, okay? The other acreage is 1.91, and this one's 1.92 or vice versa. They're almost the same. But the other property is greatly encumbered by an easement as well. And so that, although that, that, that property is 1.9 acres, a good bit of that property was not accessible to them to build anything on. And so, when they purchased, when they got the purchase price on these properties, it's considerably higher, given the fact that it's not encumbered by that easement, and therefore the need to, to, to get a better revenue stream out of it, Commissioner Graham.
You can't get that with eight plexes?
You can't get the number of units.
So, so the density is the issue. You can't get that density and still have your open parking space and et cetera with the eight plexes rather than the sixteen plexes?
What is their commitment, number three, Chris? On page five, the exteriors, all structures shall be composed of brick, stone, cement board, or other modern masonry material. What's their commitment to that?
Their intention is brick or stone. They're, across the way, it's, it's a higher component of hardy board. They don't intend to use as much hardy board in these buildings. But the intention, what I'm, what I'm trying to clarify there is there'll be no vinyl used in the exteriors, and if, if that helps, I'm happy to add that to that DPC.
I think we need to clarify that.
Okay.
With your clients.
Yes, sir. About the no vinyl?
No, the vinyl is usually the trim work.
Correct.
So what percentage is brick, stone, cement board, or masonry material?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah, what I, the, the intent of that is all the exterior, with, with the exception of a, with a soffit. I mean, that, that, I don't mean to imply that, but the exteriors will be a hundred percent brick, stone, or cement siding, or modern masonry materials. And that's consistent with what they've done on their other buildings, too.
Just need to put it in the record.
Yes, sir.
Last one, Chris. Speak to the, speak to the increased density issue. Apparently, you're over fifty percent...
They are. And I talked with Ms. Hurt about this today, and sometimes when I talk to staff, I think I get too ideological, and then I have to apologize. You know, I don't, every time I have an application, I don't mean to come here and suggest y'all redo every ordinance y'all have. That's not the point. But I have pointed out in a number of fairly recent applications before you all, that this Walnut Valley focal point, it seems like we are overlooking those policies more often than not. And I, maybe not overlooking, but excusing them, okay? And Ms. Hurt pointed out that there are sound policies, and I don't mean to suggest they're not, but the analogy I used is, I could have a plan that every day, I'm gonna limit myself to eighteen-hundred calories, and I'm gonna exercise for an hour. But at some point, when I haven't done that for three years, I'll probably look back at my plan and see if that's really a reasonable plan. And so, these Walnut Valley focal points do come up. When we did the, the pretty large industrial development back in the winter, we had the same discussion over some different focal points, but in the same plan. And I, I'll just say it's a give and take, okay? More often than not, when I'm here with a really heated development, it's because our development has gone out, and it's infringing on people. And when we have those developments, and it's usually multifamily, people will point to lots like these, and they'll say, why aren't you building these, these apartments in this multifamily in other places? And you know, that's the give and take. The less dense we build, the more acreage we're gonna need for the same inventory. That's a zero-sum game. And so the, I think the question here is, is this a reasonable place to get that extra density and still be compatible, given you've got RM4 zone behind you? I've got my client's other property to the left, and in front of this is Hucks. I haven't mentioned that yet, but the, when Rachel said that there is a metal-sided, that's Hucks, and it sits right here, at the corner. And so, you know, when this property was zoned in ninety-nine, and it was a part of this big, it was, this was a big zoning, and these frontage areas were pointed out, not only the frontage on Russellville Road, but this, these parcels we're talking, that what I'll call the next layer, that was all general business. None of that's gone general business. And I would suggest to you, it's not gonna go general business. I don't think you're gonna have general business being zoned behind Hucks, right next to the diesel, the diesel pumps. So, and it's a judgment call. That's what I'm suggesting to you. And, and the, and the policies here, on the one hand, less dense development, on the other hand, making, I would argue, making better use of these infill areas when we can. So we don't need additional acreage further out to build this multifamily inventory.
Basically, we're not gonna have any parking behind any of the buildings. As the WV1B, fifty percent of required parking should be in the rear of buildings. So we don't have any in the rear of buildings, correct?
I don't, I don't think staff would agree with zero, Commissioner Clark, because I think, the way they look at this, and I don't wanna speak to them, and they can, again, they'll correct me when I'm wrong, I think at least a portion of this would be considered to the rear of the building. You know, it goes to, are we looking from this vantage point or from this vantage point? But I will concede, Commissioner Clark, that this parking is not in the rear of these buildings. But again, they're your diesel pumps. And I, you know, if I'm renting in this development, I think I'd much rather my balcony be here or here, as opposed to the view of the diesel pumps. So, and I'm not suggesting that's why that's developed that way. I'll, to be frank, it's because this is where there's a sinkhole. And y'all know that when the topography dictates greatly where we put things on property, it doesn't make sense to have footprints of buildings in close proximity to that, so. In closing, I would just say, given the fact of, of the surrounding development, and I recognize the request here really is for ten additional units, that's, that's what we're going at, but the concessions my clients are making, I would argue, is one, a majority of these units are one-bedroom, number one.
So, explain the one-bedroom, explain to me how one-bedroom impacts these units. So if they were two-bedroom...
There'll be forty-eight units.
There'd still be forty-eight.
The density would be the same.
Okay. So, by doing one-bedroom, in theory, there are less, let's call it, less people there, and, and so they're counted differently.
I would, I would just, I would suggest not all density is the same. That's the point I'm trying to make.
I see, okay.
And then also, although they are asking for the, for that, they are limiting themselves to two stories, not look, they, they're limited at two, and they're conceding a hundred percent brick, stone, masonry. So I, I think there's some give and take going on here. And again, I would argue, given the totality of the community, number one, the, the change in the flume, I think, is compatible absolutely, and then the question is, is this prod, project here fit within the community? And again, I think the question to that is yes also.
Have any other questions before I open it up to the audience? No questions, commissioners? Do we have any questions from anyone in the audience? Do we have opposition to this request? No questions? No opposition? Thank you, sir.
Q all.
Thank you. Anything else you all would like to add before I ask for the motion concerning the flume amendment? No questions? Then I'd ask for that motion.
The motion, motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment and docket number 202004 flume, based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, proposed flume amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU 114 in the conference of plan. Further requests, this motion includes summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witness in the public hearing.
Thank you. Any a second? Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. Motion carried. Now we need to act on the zone change request, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 202008CBG, based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. Proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 conference of plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and actions listed in the item in the staff report. Further requests, proposed zoning map amendment is, is in agreement with the adopted conference of plan. Further requests, this motion includes the summary of evidence and testimony presented by witness in the public hearing.
Thank you. Any a second?
Begging.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you all. Next item is 202009 Z County. Leon Tarter has filed an application to present a tract of land containing approximately twenty-point-one-four acres, located at Zero Nashville Road, bounded by Rich Pond Road and Stewart Farm Avenue, from agriculture to general business, RM3, which is townhouse, multifamily residential, and RS1D, which is single-family residential with a general development plan. Have the staff report. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference for the property you just described, located on Nashville Road, and I will mention that you should have a revised set of development plan conditions at your seat for both the general business portion and also the RS1D portion of the proposed development. And I'll touch on those few changes here in just a minute. Moving on, the current zoning of the property is agriculture, and the current use of the property is also agriculture. The future land use designation for the property is mixed-use residential, which we heard the same description in the previous application. This future land use category applies to areas where taken... This future land use category applies to areas where taken as a whole, the primary land use is residential and a variety of housing types and densities, balanced by complementary retail, office, institutional, and civic uses. I'll come back to the density map in a second, but I will turn to the preliminary development plan that was submitted with the application. Going to the site characteristics review for the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks. The proposed layout is shown on the preliminary development plan. Setbacks, lot size, and lot width will adhere to the requirements for RS1D, RM3, and general business as set forth in the zoning ordinance, with the exception of the RS1D lots that are located along, basically, along the southern property line here. And in development plan condition number two for the RS1D portion of the development, those lots would actually adhere to the RS1C development standards. Under wastewater adequacy, staff has noted that the property is located within 2,000 feet of public sewer and will connect to sewer if the proposal is approved. Under natural features, I'll jump back to the aerial, so you can... Well, they're covered up by the property line, but they are located generally in this area here. There is a row of mature trees. The property is classified as prime farmland. And under cultural or historical features, this is reference to this portion of the property here. The Wheeler-Galtney Cemetery is located on the property. The planning commission staff recommended to the applicant that the existing family cemetery be preserved and maintained in coordination with the Warren County Cemetery Board, and that the debris should be removed, the existing fence should be repaired to the extent possible, reestablishment of a stone to its original position and tilted upright, and that a permanent plated 30-foot no-build-no-dig area on each side of the repaired fence, which should be surveyed and marked before construction begins in the development. The applicant agreed in development plan condition number nine to preserve and maintain the cemetery during development, remove the debris, and repair the fence to the greatest extent feasible. The applicant agreed to a smaller 10-foot northeast of the fence and a 20-foot southwest of the fence, no-build-no-dig area. Did not address the existing stone and did not agree to coordinate these items with the Warren County Cemetery Board. Moving on to surrounding density in our site design and compatibility review section, I'll put up the density map here. You can see that the existing and permitted densities for subdivisions in the surrounding area range from 0.09 dwelling units per acre to 6.69 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for the RS1D portion of the proposed development is 6.25 dwelling units per acre. And the density for the proposed RM3 portion of the development is 14.42 dwelling units per acre, with an overall average density proposed of 10.04 dwelling units per acre. Under surrounding architectural features, there is a mixture of older and newer residential and commercial structures in the area, ranging in height from one to two stories. South Warren Middle and High Schools are also located in the vicinity and are larger in bulk and height than the other structures in the immediate vicinity. Under building materials review, there has been a change. That is one of the main changes that is included in your revised development plan conditions for the RS1D portion of the development. The staff has noted that the majority of the surrounding structures and materials required for proposed development in the area incorporate a high percentage of modern construction materials, excluding metal and vinyl. In the RS1D portion of the development, the applicant has agreed that the exteriors of all structures shall consist of a minimum of 85%... That is a change from the original proposal. So, it'd be 85% stone, drive-it, cementitious siding, or similar material, stone, including man-made stone, or other modern masonry material. The applicant has agreed to these same materials and percentage requirements in the RM3 portion of the development. Relating to the RS1D and RM3 portions of the development, split face block and plain face block shall be prohibited. Any accessory structure or detached structure shall utilize the same material as the primary residential structure on the lot. Vinyl material shall be permitted in soffits, the undersides of porches, and similar areas. Proposed materials for the GB portion of the development include stone, brick, cementitious siding, or similar material or architectural metal panels. No facade of vinyl siding, plain face block, or split face block shall be allowed. Vinyl is only permitted in soffits, undersides of porches, and similar areas. The applicant did not specify whether or not the architectural metal panels will utilize exposed or concealed fasteners. Moving on to building orientation, the applicant agreed that principal buildings in the GB portion of the development will be designed to face Nashville Road. And the applicant also agreed that the buildings adjacent to public streets in the RM3 portion of the development shall be oriented to face the street. The buildings depicted on the preliminary development plan do not all adhere to this requirement. However, it is just a concept, so if that's what's agreed to in the development plan conditions, the applicant would be bound by that. Under landscaping and screening, landscaping and screening will adhere to the zoning ordinance requirements for vehicle use areas and between incompatible land use buffers. Under connectivity, the proposed development shall connect with the existing Stub Street, which is Merrill Street to the south. That's this connection here. Pedestrian, bicycle, or transit facilities, sidewalks are required for new commercial and residential development. There is also a greenway planned along the portion of the property fronting Nashville Road, so along this portion of the property. Staff suggested to the applicant that they consider incorporating a requirement similar to the commitment for the adjacent Stewart Farm subdivision. That's this subdivision to the south. The Stewart Farm requirement requires that the developer set aside space for the development and construction of the planned greenway path, and further agrees to construct same in the event that it's not already constructed at the time the single-family portion of the development reaches 60% lot development. The applicant agreed in development plan condition 10 for the GB portion of the development to set aside space for the development and construction of the planned greenway along Nashville Road connecting to adjacent properties, and that no certificate of occupancy for any building or buildings exceeding a total of 10,000 square feet may be issued until the greenway trail has been constructed. There is no requirement that the buildings proposed in the GB portion of the development contain 10,000 square feet, which leaves uncertainty as to if and when the greenway along Nashville Road will be constructed. Moving on to the traffic impact study section of the report. Section 314 of the zoning ordinance outlines the requirements for a traffic impact study. This section of the ordinance also states that exceptions to this requirement may be approved after consultation between the applicant and the affected agencies. And when a project's traffic impact can clearly be anticipated without a study and all of the parties involved are able to negotiate an appropriate mitigation, a traffic impact study may not be necessary. The traffic impact study was waived for this development by the Warren County Public Works Department and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet in lieu of two improvements. The first from Warren County Public Works is that a left and right turn lane from the proposed development onto US 31W, which is Nashville Road, be incorporated into the development, so that would be referencing this portion here. So, there would be dedicated left and right turn lanes out of the development. And then second was the requirement from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet that states that left and right turn lanes on Nashville Road into the development be constructed. The applicant agreed to both of these improvements in the development plan conditions for the general business portion of the development. Moving on to the development plan conditions, I've highlighted several of these already, so I'm only going to read the ones that I have not mentioned. So, the first for RS1D, these are all for the RS1D portion of the development, states that the property will be developed with a maximum of 60 residential lots. I will note that it says units in the typo. That's a... Units in the staff report, but it's a typo. Should say 60 residential lots. And then I've already touched on number two and three. Number four is one of the items that changed, so that's for the RS1D set. There should be a little reference to RS1D in the bottom-left corner. So, I'm going to turn to the second page, number four, which states that twin home buildings, so that's referencing the darker-green shaded portion back here. So, those are proposed to be twin home buildings, meaning two twin homes, one building, two homes per building, with a lot line that would separate each of the homes. So, twin home buildings that are adjacent to RS1B single-family lots along the south property line, so that's referencing this property line here, shall have a minimum of 2,600 square feet of heated living space per building exclusive of porches and garages. Other twin homes shall have a minimum of 2,200 square feet of heated living space per building exclusive of porches and garages. Single-family residences shall have a minimum of 1,600 square feet of heated living space per building exclusive of porches and garages. Each twin home shall have at least a one-car garage, and each single-family residence shall have at least a two-car garage. Going back to the staff report, number five, six, seven, eight, and nine, I'm going to read for the RS1D portion, but I will note that these are identical in the RM3 portion, and so I'm not going to read these again in just a minute. So, number five, street lighting shall consist of uniform metal or composite poles. Six, no building shall exceed two stories in height. Seven, street access to individual lots on the property will be provided by an interior county street system connecting to US 31W. Eight, all new utilities shall be underground. And nine, sinkholes detected on the property prior to or during construction will be repaired or protected with a sinkhole structure using methods by the Warren County Department of Public Works Stormwater Management, depending on whether such sinkholes are located in a proposed drainage area. Ten, healthy and undamaged mature trees located within eight feet of the eastern property line with a caliper of eight inches or greater shall be preserved during the development process. Eleven, the property will be developed with internal sidewalks on public streets for which a connection will be made to the shared-use path along Nashville Road and will be allowed to the walking trail on the adjacent school property, either directly or through the adjacent multifamily property. And then twelve, development plan condition three and five shall remain development plan conditions only until a plat of the property is recorded, at which time such development plan conditions shall become plat restrictions and/or restrictions of record in a declaration of restrictive covenants. Next, moving on to the RM3 portion. First, number one, the property will be developed with a maximum of 120 dwelling units. No building shall contain more than eight dwelling units. I've already touched on two. That's the material requirement. And then, as I mentioned, three, four, five, six, and seven are the same that we heard in the RS1D section. Number eight, the property will be developed with sidewalks on internal streets providing for a connection to the walking path on the adjacent school property, either directly or through the adjacent single-family development. And then we've already touched on nine and 10. Next, for the GB portion of the development, number one, access shall be limited to one access point on US 31W to be coordinated with and approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. The property will also be developed with a dedicated right turn lane and left turn lane from the property onto US 31W, together with dedicated left and right turn lanes on US 31W, providing access to the property. We've already touched on number two and number three. Number four, no sign shall exceed 20 feet in height or 100 square feet per sign face. All signs shall be monument style. No building, excluding churches, shall exceed 10,000 square feet. Number five outlines prohibited uses, which include a commercial parking lot. One new change that you have in your revised set of conditions has added packaged liquor sales as a prohibited use, telecommunications tower, vehicle sales, vehicle repair, adult entertainment, or adult bookstore, pawn shops, bar or lounge, group living, or greenhouse or nursery. We've already touched on number six. Number seven, buildings shall be a maximum of two stories in height. Number eight, businesses on the property shall have maximum operation hours from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. And we also touched on nine and 10. Moving on to the Focus 2030 category review. Staff evaluated 27 items. Seven of those items are in compliance. One is not in compliance, and 19 of the items are up to the planning commission to evaluate for compliance. The first, LU113, which is our compatibility item. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. Next, LU2 and 2.1, which look at quality of development and character of the area. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. Number two, or sorry, LU211, which looks at open space. The proposal generally does not comply with this item as the applicant did not address increased open space within the proposed development. LU213 and PR3, which look at planned greenway links. The planning commission should determine compliance with these items due to the notes in the staff report that I previously mentioned about timing of the construction of the proposed greenway. Next, on page seven, LU2.3.1 and TR2.1. The planning commission should evaluate compliance with these items relating to access. There were considerations made in the development plan conditions for access onto US 31W, but there was no commitment to coordinate access to individual properties proposed to be served by the new internal streets. Next, LU2.9, which looks at rural character. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development protects Rich Pond's Rural Center, if the proposed development is compatible with the area, and if it complies with this item. Next, NCR2.2, 2.4, 2.5, and 2.5.3, which include considerations for the existing cemetery on the property. The planning commission should determine compliance with these items. Next, NCR2.4.1, which looks at development pressure. The planning commission should evaluate compliance with this item as the development is proposed in an area where adequate infrastructure exists, but the planning commission should determine if the proposed development will result in premature development pressure on the countryside. Next, LU252 and HN1.2, which look at infill development. The planning commission should determine if the proposed infill development is compatible with the surrounding area. Next, HN1.3, which looks at character and pattern of development. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a compatible infill development that will maintain or improve existing character and pattern of development within the area, and if it will strengthen nearby neighborhoods. Next, HN2.1 and HN4, which look at suitability and housing options. The planning commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed residences are believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. And finally, ED1, which looks at economic development. The planning commission should determine if the proposal will help to diversify the local economy and strengthen core industries. And with that, I will wrap up with our points to consider on page one. First, the proposed RS1D, RM3, and general business zones are consistent with the future land use map and mixed-use residential category. Second, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria with considerations noted relating to the family cemetery that is currently located on the property. Next, the proposed development complies with some of the review criteria for site design with exceptions noted relating to the planned greenway along Nashville Road, access to individual properties from the newly proposed streets, building orientation, and metal building materials for the general business portion of the development. Next, the planning commission should determine if the density and style of development are appropriate for the Rich Pond community. And last, compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. That is all I have for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, commissioners?
Yes, ma'am. Looks like every lot in the back is twin homes. Where do you see a single home?
There are no single-family detached homes shown on the preliminary development plan, but it's my understanding that the applicant would like to leave the option open for both. The concept does show all twin homes, which would be possible the way it's currently proposed, but it would not eliminate opportunity for a single-family detached home as well.
So, that's a positive. If instead of five lots, they just want to put a single home on there, they could?
It could be a variety. So, you could have a couple of lots with twin homes, and then another one with a single-family detached home, kind of mixed throughout. So, it could be all twin homes, all single-family detached homes, or a mix. The applicant may be able to speak to that better than I can.
Speak to the change. I think originally it was 2,200 square feet, and the addendum indicates 2,600 square feet. Can you revisit that, Rachel?
Sure. Yeah, you're correct. The original proposal, before we received the revisions this afternoon, had a requirement that the twin homes, if constructed as a twin home building, would have a minimum of 2,200 square feet of heated- would have a minimum of two thousand two hundred square feet of heated living space per building. That is still the same requirement, uh, for the lots that are not adjacent to the southern property line, uh, but the proposed change that we received this afternoon, uh, relates to the homes along the southern property line, and in, in that instance, those twin home buildings would have at least twenty-six hundred square feet of heated living space per building. So, in theory, if you were to put a lot line between, which is required for a twin home, you have a lot line, uh, two single-family homes that are attached with a shared wall, divided by a common property line, uh, based on the development plan condition, it would require roughly thirteen hundred square feet per residence. It's not to say, the, the way it's designed, you may have one that's, uh, fourteen hundred square feet, and the other side may be twelve hundred, but overall, the total square footage under roof would have to be the twenty-six hundred.
These are on separate Ds, so, so on the other side, you could have eleven hundred square feet homes now, correct? Twenty-two hundred square feet or a thousand square foot?
On, if you're, the way it's worded, if it's not one of the lots adjacent to Stewart Farm, then that's where the twenty-two hundred square foot minimum would be found on this side here. Right, you got it. Would be, yes, one garage per unit, yes, right.
Are there questions, commissioners, before we hear from the applicant? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Runner. My name's Kevin Brooks, and I represent the applicant. Just to close the loop on the question that Mr. Graham was asking, I think we're all on the same page, but bottom line is that we, we don't have a square footage minimum per dwelling unit in the twin home section. We have, we have a square foot min- square footage minimum per building. So, you're gonna have a, a twenty-two hundred square foot building. One would assume that would be two eleven hundred square foot dwellings, so it wouldn't have to be. And same, same thing on the other side.
But it would be two separate Ds, is that correct?
Absolutely, it'd be a property line down the middle. So, i- if we, if we develop them as, uh, twin homes, we certainly may develop some of it as single-family residences, that would be the sixteen hundred square foot per dwelling unit in that case.
It'd be larger than that expected. Uh, are they committed to, uh, a minimum of sixteen going up to twenty?
Well, it, it absolutely could be larger, and I think our common experience is how homes almost always are.
Yes, they are.
You, you see very few homes that are right at the minimum in a subdivision. I, I, you know, you might be a little bit more likely to see that in a, in a development like this, 'cause I mean, I don't think you're gonna see any four thousand square foot houses out there, that's not, not what we're looking at, so. Um, so, uh, just a couple of comments, and then, then I'll just see if we can, we can answer your questions. We, uh, we have made changes now twice since we submitted this a few weeks ago. Uh, first, in reaction to the staff's comments, we made several changes, and then we made some changes today, uh, in reaction to comments from a neighbor. Um, and it, both, all of those changes, I think, really add to the concept that we have had all along, and I wanna just sort of mainly talk about the, what we've been talking about, the back single-family residential part. The stuff in the front, this is multifamily, uh, fewer units than we have right next door. The, the density may be same, 'cause it look, that property looks bigger, but just make the comment that there are more units here than there are here. And then, these developments are just very similar, allowed for very similar commercial development. And what we've done back here is, is, uh, we attempted to do, and I think we've done just a nice transition, so this, uh, staff, tell me if I'm wrong, I believe this is RS one B, uh, was zoned several months ago. So...
Yes, RS one B.
So, what we've done is, uh, this is RS one B, this is RS one C, this is RS one D, so, we just think that's an appropriate transition from this property to this property, and we have worked with this property owner today, changing those, just to, making them just a little bit bigger, so. So, the properties that I refer to as RS one C, we were zoning all of that one D, but we have by development plan conditions committed to RS one C standards, which means we have wider setbacks and, and some other things like that, and then we have committed just to larger, uh, buildings. So, that's what we've done. It's a kind of a long staff report, 'cause I stuck them with three different sets of development plan conditions. Um, Mr. Tartar is here, and Mr. Shirley is here, the engineer, we'll be happy to answer any other questions you've got.
To clarify, the, uh, development plan condition four in the RS one D section, in the final, next to the final sentence, you talk about the number of one-car garages, uh, and I think it's implied, but just to make certain, each twin home unit shall have at least one car garage.
I mean, yes, that's certainly what we intend, and if you wanna insert the word "unit" there, that, that's fine. So, if it's a twin home building, there'll be two garages, one for each unit, yeah.
Kevin, you said that you had made some changes, uh, um, based on some conversations with the neighbor, uh, and...
Yes, and he's here, and I think you'll verify that that happened. I don't think he's here to, in opposition, but just to be sure I don't change anything on him.
So, uh, in, in your view, did you guys come to an agreement on how this should go?
I think so. I think, um, and I think the fundamental change we made back there was just making those buildings bigger, making those units bigger, yeah. Which is, you know, to be honest, kinda how we thought it probably built out anyway. Again, it's, it's a minimum we're talking about, so, so.
Are there questions from the commissioners? Do we have any questions from any one of the audience? Do we have any opposition? You state your name and address.
Uh, Jody Allen, fourteen oh two Mount Air Circle.
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, well, let me, I find myself in a little unique position here tonight, uh, uh, so this is a little new to me, so, first of all, let me state, I, I am not in opposition in general to the zoning that they are looking for, okay? I'll, I'll maybe be clear, and I, I did have a conversation, I stopped by the Tartar's office yesterday and, and had a great conversation with them, and explained to them the concerns that, that we, that I have personally for the, the project and investment that we have right next door to them. So, I think it's important for, if I can just take just a second to, to, the background of, from where I'm coming from, and the Stewart Farm development. Uh, that's a forty-acre development that some of, some of you all were here for that hearing, uh, uh, took a lot of work to get that done. We had two public hearings, uh, we came in front of this commission, uh, got, the initial application got turned down, went back, uh, did some more work on it, uh, and came back, and finally came up with, uh, the Stewart Farm development that you see today. Um, so, again, I, when I, I guess, I say this, the zoning is not my concern for the most part. The RS one D is a concern of mine. It's the binding elements that they proposed to put in place really is the concern I have, because it's, it, it doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood, of the results from the neighborhood meetings that we had, the meetings that we had with staff, the feedback that we got from the commission, went back to work, redid the plan multiple times, to come back here to find a solution that, granted, not everybody liked, we didn't get what we want, nobody got what they, what they really wanted out of that deal, but we got, everybody got to a point where, uh, it passed this commission, and we built it exactly the way we said we were going to. So, th- the best scenario I can, I can give you real quick is, is to, to tell you what the Stewart Farm development would look like today with the same set of binding elements that are being asked, uh, to be passed here. So, the commercial, the commercial section up front would have a Quickie Mart, a couple fast-food restaurants, uh, I think maybe they decided not to put a liquor store in, which is great, but it would be a Scottsville Road-type atmosphere. You would go back, the next section where we're, we have the, uh, multifamily apartments right now, we would have, instead of the hundred and twenty-eight units that we have, we'd have a hundred and fifty units. No clubhouse, no pool, no garages, no amenities, no green space. You'd drive past our development, and you'd come up with a hundred and fifty eleven hundred to thirteen hundred square foot single-family residences. That's what Stewart Farm would look like today with the same set of binding elements that they're asking for. So, again, I'm not opposed to the, to the zoning, but the binding elements that, that are being asked to put in place are nowhere near what the characteristics, uh, that were talked about in the Ridge Pond focal point. Okay? And that, that's my concern. We have a fourteen million dollar investment in the overlook at Stewart Farms, based on the commitments that we made to the community, the developer at that time made to the community, uh, based upon what the, uh, binding elements said on the general business in the front, we built those, you built those units in a certain position and way because of what couldn't be built there. Uh, and so, again, what I'm, what I would ask is that, and again, I, I, I'm not even gonna say the, I don't even say the word "fair," because fair doesn't really come into, into play in, in this thing. I would ask that, uh, that, the piece of property that's proposed to be rezoned be similar and like-kind, and I'm gonna use some of Rachel's, uh, words and some of the things, improve and maintain the existing character of the Ridge Pond, uh, development there. And, and these binding elements just don't do that. Um, so, I, you know, again, I think they, uh, then they did, they tried to do a, a job in, in raising the size of the, uh, developments that, that, uh, joined Stewart Farm, which is great. So, again, you go to sixteen hundred, you as- you assume that they're thirteen hundred, they don't have to be, you could still have a sixteen hundred square foot side and a thousand square foot side, so you're gonna deed that, you're gonna deed that single-family home at a thousand feet to somebody in the hundred and ten thousand, hundred and twenty-five thousand range, and they're gonna back up to a house that's, uh, at a minimum of eighteen hundred square feet, being built at a two thousand square foot level with a two-car garage. You know, that's just, it's not a compatible use. You can call it one B, one C, one D if you want to, the reality is, that's what it is. Uh, so, again, I'm not, it, sounds like I'm in opposition, and I'm not, but, uh, and again, I'm not, it's not about fair, but it's about honoring the commitments that we made as the, as a development on this property, that the sta- that the staff made to, to all the residents that showed up at those meetings, and that this commission made by, by creating and holding us to a set of binding elements that we were fully committed to. So, um...
So, Jody, in, in your view, um, what changes to the binding elements would make this, uh, would make this project compatible?
Well, again, I, I, I hate to price somebody else's property, but, uh, from a general business standpoint, there's no reason that those general business binding elements don't match the set of binding elements that currently exist. And, and part of that, the biggest part of that is, is because it was evident, and I think it still is today, the staff's rec- uh, recommendation, that Ridge Pond not become Scottsville Road. Uh, and with this, with the current set of binding elements that are there, that's what, that's what could happen.
So, you're referring to the, uh, to the exclusions on the commercial por- portion?
Commercial.
Highway business and then the, the twin homes?
Uh, well, the, 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 the binding elements on the general business should match, or be very similar to the binding elements that are next door to, uh, in front of, uh, Stewart Farm.
Okay, and so, in particular, what items in those binding elements are, it, it, so...
Well, I think there's, uh, there's, and again, I've got them here, and I, uh, the, uh, uh, the fueling station is an issue, fast-food restaurants are an issue.
And those are, and so, does staff have the binding elements for Stewart Farms here? Are both of those excluded from Stewart Farms, or, or...
Sorry, fueling station is a prohibited use, and, uh, fast-food operations in their common definition will not be allowed.
So, they're both prohibited in Stewart Farms?
Correct.
Okay.
I think liquor, I think liquor stores are, but I believe they just added that, or agreed to add that to that.
Yes, packaged liquor sales are also prohibited in Stewart Farm.
And the, the other part of that is, in that general business, is, we, we, uh, had, or, or the developers are required to build that greenway space once sixty percent of the residential houses get built in there. That's because you're gonna have people live there, I wanna go out and walk somewhere. When you tie the greenway space to the, to the building of, of building over ten thousand feet, that may never happen. So, it won't be long, at some point this year, the developments through a farm is gonna have to go out and start construction of that greenway space. So, you're gonna have a section of greenway space that not, and doesn't tie into anywhere.
Okay, so, uh, so I wanna be clear here, Jody, if, if those exclusions were added, uh, to the, uh, commercial portion, would that be acceptable to you?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, so, so let's set that aside for a moment, and, uh, your other concern, it appears to be with the density of the twin homes?
Uh, yes, I mean, again, you're, you're putting sixty single-family residences on ten acres, we've got eighty residences on twenty-five acres. We're at three dwelling units an acre.
So, what is the minimum square footage for, for, um...
It's eighteen hundred.
Okay.
Two-car garage.
I wanna add this for the record, I did make a phone call to staff yesterday, and it is my understanding that Stewart Farms was the first development, um, under the new comprehensive plan, is that correct?
It was one of the first, um, in the Ridge Pond area. There were a couple of others, I went back after we talked yesterday, 'cause I wanted to make sure I had my information correct. Um, the other developments, let me look at my notes, uh, eighty-seven fifty Nashville Road, um, which is just south of, uh, Stewart Farm, uh, that was done after the Stewart Farm development, under our current comprehensive plan. Um, and then also, uh, actually, one of the very first under the, the current plan was the location of the current Ridge Pond Market, um, when it was relocated. I had forgotten when we talked yesterday that we had rezoned that under our current comprehensive plan. Um, and then the old Ridge Pond Market location was rezoned in twenty sixteen, um, it was split-zoned Ag and Highway Business, and it was cleaned up to where everything matched on that property. So, those have been the ones, or the properties in the general vicinity that are, that were considered by this commission under our current comprehensive plan.
Reason I offer that for the record is, the staff has pointed out that there is no focal point, if you will, uh, for Ridge Pond, there is, I think it's, uh, it's Rural Village, and so, I was not a part of the Stewart Farms', um, uh, zoning, I wasn't on the commission at that time, but apparently Stewart Farms set a bit of a precedent in that Ridge Pond area, and, and that seems to be what you are alluding to.
Yeah, and let, and I, let me state, I'm not opposed to the RS one D, the twin homes. I, I, I think a twi- a twin home is, is fine, uh, but there has to be a minimum, uh, put in there, and it, and it can't be, it shouldn't be a thousand feet, it'd be whatever you guys wanna make it, but it shouldn't be a thousand feet. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't, you shouldn't, uh, build, it's just not compatible, and it doesn't, and it doesn't improve or maintain the existing character of the neighborhood.
Would fifteen hundred per square, per deed be acceptable?
I think that's a lot closer to it.
So, that would be a three thousand square foot building? Okay? Other concerns?
No, I think that's it, I, I, there's, you know, again, the, the density on, on their multifamily is a little bit higher than ours, but I'm not, uh, it, it is what it is. I, I would hope that it would be more in character with, with the... I, I would hope that it would be more in character with, with the development that we have, but I, I don't think that's gonna be that. But again, it's, I'm not here to, to, to really dive into those numbers. It's, it's the front backend that I think would really impact the, the investment and the community that we're, that we've built there.
When you did your development, did you submit elevations and et cetera?
Absolutely, not, you know, that's the other part that, that concerns me. If the binding elements aren't written in a way to, to make the picture in reality, then there's a, you know, the likelihood of thi, this gets sold to somebody that will develop it. And then, all you have to do is go by the binding elements. You know, we submitted elevations of exactly what the, our buildings were gonna look like. We submitted elevations of what the single-family homes were gonna look like. We had, uh, the road design, you know, we, we basically had a, a, a working document plan, and that's exactly what was put in place.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, um, that was the most aggressive opposition I've ever had from someone who's not against me, but anyway. We'll, 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 we'll try to, we'll try to address some of this. The, um, we'll be happy to add fast food and fuel stations to the prohibited use in the general business section.
Okay, so I think that addresses that concern fully and completely, is that correct?
Um, thirty seconds ago was the first time I heard you think about providing elevations, so we're not gonna be able to do that here tonight. So, Mr. Allen explained his experience in getting his property, hi, his groups, I call it his property rezoned. And he came once and lost, and he came back and, uh, was not here, but I think there were some ongoing, maybe like we're having right now, negotiations on the floor. And so, he knows how hard one works on these developments before you get where we are now. And how hard therefore it is to, uh, respond to all this stuff. We just, we will take the responsibility for misunderstanding that the increase in the, in the building size was not enough. I don't know where the notion of a one-thousand square foot, uh, home came from. We've never said we would have a one-thousand square foot. He was specifically referring to the RS-one-C section, so we got a twenty-six-hundred square foot building. We could, I guess, have a sixteen-hundred on one and one-thousand on the other. I, I can't, that's not our intention, I can't conceive that that would look very good. So, you know, I, we, I think generally, they're gonna be the same size. I can't say that one won't be eight-hundred square feet larger on either side. And ge, generally, notwithstanding what we just said, if we do single-family, we're just a couple hundred square feet off of what, again, I think it's an appropriate transition from what he's got to what we propose. So, um, I don't think, uh, I don't think any, I heard anything else that's really subject of a very easy, on-the-floor, uh, new development plan condition, but we're happy to do the general business part, and that.
What about the greenway, Kevin?
So, oh, okay, yeah, we could, look.
Well, no, I mean, I.
I agree.
It's, it's, it was a question asked.
The question's asked, and we'll, and we'll respond, thank you. So, uh, the staff and I may not, have not been on the same page. We just wanted a trigger point to build the greenway, and we weren't trying to be cheap about it. Uh, we thought the greenway is out front, uh, where the commercial development is, and we, so we tied it to, you know, kinda halfway done on commercial development, and then we'll build the greenways. They tied it to, was it sixty percent of the, of the residences? We'll be happy to do that. I think that goes in a different, I think that then comes out of the GB section amp and goes into the, um, RM-three section. No.
RS-one-D.
RS-one-D.
Okay, to the RS-one-D section, that's fine, that's fine. Sixty perc, okay.
Sixty percent of?
I'm fine with that, we all know that that's gonna be a little hard to define, 'cause we don't know how many units we're gonna have, but we're, we're not trying to hide behind that, we'll do, we'll commit to exactly what they committed to.
So we're going back to number of units, the number of units is still undefined, is that right, Kevin? On the back, on the backside, on the twin homes?
Um, we can tell you, I think, what the maximum number, maximum build-out if we did every single twin home right at the minimum size, which is not, I think we can do that.
The number of buildings they have their huts to would be the maximum.
Yeah, so, uh, we can count them, but tha, that's a maximum build-out.
Sixty.
And I would say an unlikely scenario, but that's it, yes.
And so Kevin, I think you, you will appreciate, what we're doing here today is, we're, um, we're trying to address the worst-case scenario. Uh, hopefully, you and your client, uh, plan to build some single-family here, but if, uh, if we could address the worst-case scenario, we might be able to, to make this a bit more palatable. Or is, um, are you open to discussing the twin home size and, um, and, and in my view, we could address this, this opening of a thousand square foot by simply saying that there's a minimum size to eat.
Well, I think that would be fine, 'cause we're not gonna build a thousand square foot.
Okay.
Twin home.
And so, would you, would you and your client be open to a fifteen-hundred square foot minimum per deed, which would mean a three-thousand square foot structure, if I understand correctly?
Doubt it. Uh, we're, we're getting away from the concept of a twin home and being something somebody can afford, and we think there's a really good market for it out there. Well, if we can, i- i- I, I think you may have more things written down there, so let's see what else we need to think about, and we might need a minute.
Based on the comments that, that I understood just a moment ago, that's really the other issue is, uh, and, and you might consider, you know, a fence or something to separate these two pieces of property, but really, if I understood Jody's comments, if, if you, if, if you could move away from this eleven-hundred square foot option, uh, and Jody can speak for himself, but it seems like your opposition goes away.
That's what I heard him say, but I just point out that the buildings adjacent to Jody are twenty-six-hundred. The buildings will be bigger than a lot of houses. The buildings themselves, it's not gonna look like a little dinky. It's gonna be, it's gonna, the buildings are gonna be larger. And that, so I don't know if it's, um, I don't, I don't know if it's an, if it's an objection to what, really, frankly, the demographics that we're gonna have, I don't know. I'd be happy to talk to my client about a minimum unit size, which I think makes sense.
If that's my, um, I think that's the objection, as, as I understand it, is the.
The minimum building size might be a little tougher. So, we wanna eliminate the possibility of a thousand square foot twin home, we, I think we can do that. So, I thought you were gonna say something, Mr. Warren, sorry, sorry, okay.
Only way you could correct that, or change that, would be, not correct it, but change that, would be to eliminate the, the number of lots.
It would be, be shrink the number of lots.
Yes.
Yeah. Which would address density, but not unit size or house size, would just be fewer of them.
Wouldn't it, Kevin?
These, actually, I just point this out, they're a little narrow, but these are big lots. And you see how far away those units are from, from the houses? They're, they're a long way, I can get you a dimension on that, but these are really deep lots. So.
So if you chose, could you get a three-thousand square foot unit on those lots?
I don't know.
Okay.
I doubt it. I don't know.
It's awfully big, three thousand, I mean, that's really big if you're trying to get a four-foot housing.
Shotgun building, I mean, the, the lot's big enough, but it wouldn't be. Yeah, it would be real long, and I would think not very marketable.
You're trying to do affordable housing, is my, how I understand it, in thirteen-hundred square foot.
I think affordable housing's a good word, and it's something that I'm real interested in this community. Uh, but, uh, I would say it another way, and that is, we believe that there's just really quite a market for this product in this town, and there's not much of it, and there's particularly a market, we think, and that's why we're doing it. We think there's a market out there for this, so. So I don't wanna, I, I, I don't wanna commit to those, any other development plan conditions without, without a couple of minutes with my client and my engineer to see, 'cause I don't wanna screw the whole development up while I'm standing up here.
Okay, we'll just do, we'll just do a five-minute break.
That would be great.
And then come back and.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you, we'll take a five-minute break.
Can I ask staff one question? When was that Stewart development done? What year? Since we don't have anything about it?
It's twenty-seventeen.
Twenty-seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
So three years?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, five-minute break, thank you all.
Thank you, five-minute break, thank you all.